Good evening. I hope you all are doing well today. I call this meeting to order and I'll turn it over to City Manager, Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I'd like to introduce my team here. Chrissy Hamel, Letitia Shelton, and Ryan Davison. As many of you are aware, we've been working on the budget for a significant period of time. As we've told the council is that we've balanced the budget at this current time. As we know that things will come up through this meeting where we'll talk about in terms of any increases and things of that nature that we can basically discuss and talk about as we move forward to be able to officially adopt the budget for fiscal year 21. As you can recall, we came to the council and we talked about how we were going to go about budgeting for fiscal year 21 by using the zero-based budgeting model to try to look at our overall expenditures instead of looking at it in terms of increasing budgets by whatever percentage it may be, whether it was 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%, 5% increases. What we wanted to do is make sure that we go back to the baseline and look at all expenditures and be able to define those throughout each budget and especially each line item. When we first started too, we talked about the overall CIP and the amount of money that we had to put into the CIP going into FY21 to stay within our budget policies and to transfer from the general fund. But also, as we talked about that, we also talked about how, over a period of time, how we continuously use some of our INS fund balance to be able to decrease the amount of tax that we would have to increase it without us using that fund balance, but using it over a period of time that we have, over a period of time, that will be essentially eliminating that fund where more of those dollars will have to come from the general fund and able to pay for, in order for us to pay for our overall debt. As you can recall, from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20, that increased from 23 million to 35 million, which was a 51% increase. So going into FY20 to 21, we went from 35.4 million to 35.8 million, which was a 1.14% increase. And this enabled us to stay within the guidelines of our own policies that we have in place in terms of the transfer from the general fund. Now, as we talked about before, we've increased that transfer to be able to afford our overall debt service. But also too, when we looked at our projections from when we first started going into FY21, our amount of expenditures that we had exceeded our projections. And that's normal at the time when you're trying to develop the budget. But what we're seeing is that from year to year, you know, that number continues to grow as the overall assessments continue to rise. So, you know, as I always tell people, I try to look at the inverse reaction in terms of the tax rate. You know, either it stays steady when those assessments go up or it either goes down. But we've been able to keep it steady at that 95%...at that 95 cent tax rate as the assessments have gone up. But as they have gone up, so have our expenditures. So in terms of trying to close the overall gap, we started at, what, 13.8 million? And, you know, we closed it and brought it down, but with our expenses, our revenues to our expenses in the beginning, that was around that gap based upon our projected revenues to our projected expenditures. That was about seven-plus million. So we were able to do that. And that took a lot of cutting from various parts of our, well, throughout various departments, throughout the city to be able to balance the budget. And as we see that our major revenues such as real estate, personal property, meals tax, lodging tax, sales tax, and B-pole, you know, as they continue to grow, and I, you know, and I keep expressing this, our expenses continue to grow. But it looks like in this year, it looks like our expenses far exceeded a lot of our projected revenues. So as you can recall, last year, in order to balance the budget, some of the things that were done was to, you know, increase your meals tax and also increase your lodging tax. And, you know, there are some of the areas where we'll talk about a little bit more throughout this presentation, you know, that can be looked at in terms of us having more revenue. But as you also recall, we talked about many of the one-time expenditures. As you look at our one-time expenditures, and as I tell folks, it is supposed to be one-time expenditures, but as you can see in the budget, a lot of these expenditures, these one-time expenditures become a part of the budget. And as that happens, you know, that continues to compound over time. So as it compounds, you know, those numbers continue to rise each year. So, you know, and that's why I was telling the council, when we are on the dais and people come to the dais and want to have some increases or look at ways where we can supply them with additional revenues, that we have to be careful in terms of what we do and think about it before making a decision on the floor because, as I mentioned, you know, those things that go from one year of one-time expenditures to being next year that we have to account for those. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the budget. But, you know, being able to cut that much as we were this year, it was really hard to be able to get back in balance, you know, without looking at or even coming to the council with a tax rate increase with the amount of increased assessments. So I'm going to turn it over to Chrissy first. Oh, I'm sorry, Ryan first, who will go through it. But we do have it listed throughout our agenda to talk about, you know, the overall process of developing our budget beyond what I just discussed, as well as our revenue projections where we first started out in November with our projections to where we are at today with our projections. And we were able to squeeze a little bit more out, not too much, just a little bit to be able to continue to try to look at ways to close the gap. But also too, to talk about our overall expenditures and the adjustments that we made and then some of the new expenditures that are listed that we need to talk about moving forward because, you know, we do have, as we've talked about before, you know, even what, last week when we had the discussion with the school board, you know, the gap that we do have pertaining to that 2.5 million dollar gap that we have to, you know, talk about here today, and as I said, we would have to have further discussion about that. But they're all things that, you know, we had to account for within our budget to have those discussions and to look at different ways that we could do those projections as well as look at our overall expenditure. So I'm not going to be able to point them. I'm going to turn it over to you, Ryan.
All right. I just have a quick question about the 13.8 million. So 13.8 million was, that sum was from new programs that council had allocated as one-time funding?
The 13.8 million was the starting point. That's the difference between the FY20 budget and the total of the expenditure submissions that we received for FY21. So that was the 13.8, and that did not include any new revenue. So the 13.8 is, and then less the new revenue gets us to the 7.5 gap that we're going to start talking about.
So within that 13.8, there was some of those new programs that were funded by one-time funding that council had approved going forward. We have a slide to talk about those. But it was also the 2.1 million dollars of the formula for the schools request was also in that 13.8 million plus the ask from the contractual agencies that we found and as well as the departmental requests. And I know I'm leaving out some things, but there's a...we'll go through it in more detail as we move through the slides. We have a slide that kind of breaks that down a little bit more. As Dr. Richardson said, we're going to start with just a little bit of...well, before we get into this, I wanted to, I did want to point one thing out that I delivered to council. That was the council, as part of the year-end discussion, we talked about the council strategic initiatives summary and what those have been spent on and specifically the equity fund. The last page is current year allocations. And on the very back page, it shows the starting point for the equity fund as we had it outlined and then the uses of that throughout the year, how we got down to zero and then added, as part of the year-end, added another $300,000 to that equity fund because, Mayor Walker, you had asked where those expenses have been on the equity fund. And these are the ones that were specifically called out to be, to come from the equity fund. So we have this. We wanted to provide you with a paper copy now. We'll follow it up with an email copy and post this online tomorrow. So, but I just wanted to let you know that we did.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, moving along, obligatory going through the dates of our budget. These are our budget work sessions. Once we have the proposed budget out there, these are the work sessions. I wanted to point out, we did just change the, get confirmation on the locations for the March 24th Community Budget Forum, which is going to be at the Boys and Girls Club on Cherry Avenue and the April 7th work session. Both of those were changed dates, so we had to find new locations. And the April 7th is going to be at the Water Street Center down at TJ PDC here, right down just a couple of blocks over. So all this is at www.shawesville.org/budget. We've had all these work sessions up since we've set them, as well as all these important dates, the proposed budget going to council on March 2nd, our public hearings, and then finally, the adoption of the budget on April 14th. Did want to say, did want to mention again, February 11th is our drop dead date for any balancing and for any changes that may occur. We have to get the add to the paper by February the 11th to be able to publish it in time to meet our legal requirements. So the main thing on this is any real estate changes have to be, real estate tax changes will need to be made by that point. We do have, we can advertise up to seven days for any other tax changes or fee changes, but for real estate, we do have to know that with 30 days before our first publication on those tax rates.
And just to clarify, the total budget is set, but we can still change the allocations. It's just the total dollar can't change.
So, as Dr. Richardson mentioned, we started with the, as of November, once we got the initial expenditure estimates in, which were approximately 13.8 million dollars higher than the FY20 budget at 202 million. And our initial FY21 revenue estimates at that time were at about 195 million, which was also an increase. That left us with a gap of about 7.5 million dollars to close. As, also as Dr. Richardson said, that's not unusual to have a large gap at this point once you get the initial submissions in and start reading through all of that. But this is one of the larger gaps we've seen, we've seen it in a while. So there was a lot of work to do as we went through there. On the revenues, so our initial revenue estimates were about 195 million. We were able to make some slight adjustments to some revenues and come back with roughly 196.6 million. That was about a total adjustment of about 1.4 million on the revenue side. We'll go into those in a little more detail in a future slide, but I also wanted to kind of hit on, here are the major revenue drivers broken out by the categories. We'll get to the local taxes on the next slide, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with that. But as you can see, with the, you know, we were seeing steady growth in most areas with the exception of some, you know, we like to remove all the one-time revenues and transfers and carryovers so that we're not relying on those year after year. The rating agencies do look down if you continue to use one-time funds over and over and over again. So we always start with removing anything we had in the prior year. The revenue sharing, because we were seeing an increase overall in the revenue sharing, but because of the increase to the transfer to the CIP, the amount going to the operating budget was reduced slightly while we had about a $400,000 increase to the, in the designated revenues portion for the revenue sharing going to the CIP. If you have any questions on any of these specific categories as to the changes, I'll be happy to answer those. But we, we'll talk about the local taxes on the...
What was, what was driving some of those one-time revenues and transfers?
So initially, two of the big ones that we were, the biggest, largest ones that we removed was last year, we had a one-time transfer from the Human Services Fund balance. They had a fund balance exceeding a certain amount. And so we were able to do that one-time transfer to help us balance the budget and keep their fund balance at, within a certain level. And so we don't have that flexibility this year, unfortunately, but that was, that was the biggest one. That was about $772,000 of that 916 change. And another one was $250,000. I believe that was from either risk management or healthcare. I'd have to double check. But yeah, that was, excuse me, there was one-time, there was carryover funds from some council strategic initiatives for some diversionary programs that we carried over that we have since spent in the current fiscal year. And also, there was, I think that was the, the major changes there. And then $100,000 of our transfer from the parking fund, that was reduced. So that drove that decrease in that number there. As I was saying, with some of our local taxes, just want to show, this is our natural growth on the real estate, personal property tax, meals, lodging, sales, business and professional licenses. As you can see, it's steady growth in a lot of these areas. However, you know, our treasurer and our commissioner of revenue are weary at some point in time with, you know, these meals, lodging, sales, you know, we are looking at potentially coming back to some kind of a plateau. We have seen a lot of steady growth because we saw that big drop, but eventually we're not going to see that kind of growth. So we need to be wary of those numbers as well. And the real estate is based on our latest real estate assessments.
And do you know the breakout of those assessments, what is from new versus what is from just the market? And if you don't have it right now, it's fine. I feel like we've talked about this once.
New construction was about 56 million.
In terms of its value?
Value.
Yeah. We, I'd have to look at the assessment packet.
I can tell you. Or Chris, do you know it?
It's fine. It's not a big deal.
Yeah, we don't have, I don't have that off the top of my head, unfortunately. So, moving on to, this is based on all of the current real estate estimates that we have, or, excuse me, all of the revenue estimates that we have, this is what one cent or 1% would be worth on these particular taxes. So if there was any desire to make changes to these revenue items, either up or down, this is one thing we don't have to decide now. I know you want to, you want to see some of the expenditure stuff and those other things before we really dig deep into this discussion. But I just wanted to show you, you know, for example, based on the new real estate assessments, one penny is worth approximately $825,000 worth of revenue. Meals tax, 2.5, and so on. So that's where we are with our revenues. So any questions on the revenues at this point? All right. Now I am going to, we will turn it over to Chrissy to start on the expenditure side and we'll work through this.
I like how you give her that part.
Oh, okay. So we've kind of jumped around to the subject. There were budget challenges starting out. As we've talked about, the submissions exceeded last year's budget of 188. We were at 202. That's about 13.8 million dollar increase that was requested. Of that 13.8, about $8 million of that was made up from departmental request. Agency submissions were about 824. The schools, per the calculation, that's 40% of the real estate and personal property was 2.1 million. And then transfer to other funds, that's social services, debt service, transit, they made up about 2.8 million of that. In addition to just the operational increases, departments submitted about $8 million in new requests. And then to your question earlier, Mayor, there were about $933,000 worth of programs that were approved during, at the dais during the year that have ongoing implications in the budget. Those were the CRB, the Home to Hope Program, the Office of Equity Inclusion, Unity Days, and then the Food Equity Program. So those were added, adds to the operational budget.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused a little bit.
So this is what's included in the 13.8?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no. So the, yes, this is what's in the 13.8, yes, but not necessarily what's in the budget right now.
So transfer to other funds, that 2.8 million includes this 933,000 from these programs approved through the year?
No, so transfer to other funds are like transfer to transit, transfer to social services. We have some...
So that's not included in the 13.8 million?
What's not included?
The 933,000.
Yes, it is.
It is, okay.
Because that was my question, because you have the departmental submissions, the 8.1, and that's similar to the second big bullet of $8 million of new requests. So it's like a sub...
Right. So the 8.1 was just operational increases. The second bullet were new requests that are not in the 13.8.
I see.
Okay. That's why I think the question around the 933, is that also not in the 13?
So in our initial estimates of the expenditures, the one piece that was in there is the food equity piece because that was the one piece that we had, council had approved prior to those initial estimates going in. And so we had included that in our initial, in that, that's in the 13.8, but the other programs there, we had not gotten clear direction on those yet from council. So those all happened after that initial estimate in November. So it was just a timing thing. But as you'll see as we go forward, they are included moving forward.
So from a staff standpoint, when we discuss CRB, Office of Equity, Home to Hope, Food Equity, and Unity Days, you all did not think that we were trying, attempting to do that more than one year?
So we did, and we'll get to the next slide. This is just trying to summarize for you the challenges that we faced and this, the fact that this 933 is an add. We do have it added in the budget, which you'll see in the next slide. So we talked to you about that we have new revenue. The total new revenue from '20 to '21 is 7.7 million dollars. So starting out, before we started to look at the budget, there were certain things that we knew we had to consider first. One is the contribution to schools, so the 40%, that's the 2.1. There was an increase in the funds that were allocated for the agencies of the Vibrant Community Fund of 200,000. The contractual agencies, we had an increase of about 97,000. And then here's your 933. So that, that is in the budget right now. There's currently a plan for the 2% merit and any other benefit increases, that's about a million dollars. And then the transfer to other funds, these are increases. So the debt service went up about 250, capital projects went up about 400, social services 300, transit 542,000, transfer to the visitor center. So by the time we put in the things that we knew we needed to include, we're down to about 1.7 million dollars in new revenue to allocate for anything additional.
So I have a question about the increase in, so the debt service, that takes into account the pay down for the reserve?
Correct. So we started with the gap of 7.5. Ryan talked to you about the adjustments we were able to make in, on the revenue side, which we're going to talk about in detail, of about 1.4. We went into expenditures and we made adjustments of about 6.1. And those increases and decreases are how we close the gap. And so to talk about that in a little more detail, we're going to, on the revenue piece, we had building permits. We, we were able to increase about 50,000 overall. We found, there's a trending increase on the Virginia communications tax. We know from information we got from the state, we're going to get some additional police assistance. We're getting some additional payment in lieu of taxes from the utilities. We're, originally, we had planned for a larger, smaller transfer from the parking fund. We reduced that. And so we got 300,000 back from that. Some other taxes and fees. And then the school contractual contracts, the change from year to year, we got an increase of about 413,000. And then additionally, with our agreement with the county, there was a slight decrease in money for the juvenile court. So that got us to 1.4 in adjustments we were able to make on the revenue side. Then moving on to expenditures, we looked through the departmental submissions and the term here, departmental reductions, I just want to be clear that this is not a reduction in the departmental budget from where they are in '20, but rather a reduction of the submissions that they submitted. So to my knowledge, based on what we have in right now, no department has a budget that's less than where they are in FY20. Outside agencies, we were able to look at that and make reductions. We reduced what we had, we had planned to put money in the citywide reserve and council reserve, but both of those were addressed with the year-end appropriations, so we took those out. We had planned a larger increase to the transfer to debt service. We decreased that. Same with social services, we were able to do that. The employee pay and benefits, again, this is a little bit of a misnomer. Last year, we had a, because we budgeted the merit in a lump sum, we had a budget in there for 4.1%, 4.17%, which is what we got last year. We reduced that to 2%. So that got us a million four in savings. And then some other miscellaneous things. In addition, there were a couple new requests, a very few new requests from departments that we added. And, and then for new programs, and again, these go back to the, I can tell you, those were the council adds, basically.
Everything except for the food equity, which we had in the initial survey, the 155 for the food equity, that'll get you back to that 933, 681 figure. So that's those new programs that we were discussing earlier.
Correct.
Ready?
And moving on...
So food equity, they, they were grant-funded and they were dependent upon both donations, correct?
Correct. And it was, when they made the presentation, this was a three-year grant, so it would also carry over. The grant was three years. They were looking for external sources, is my understanding. But there is also the potential that we will need to look at the 155 again in FY22, depending on whether or not they're able to secure that outside funding or not.
So you're saying right now, that's been cut?
No, that, those were additions.
Okay.
Moving forward, as we were talking about before, just with those other items in terms of expenditures, what we haven't accounted for are those gaps. And we just wanted to give you a brief summary of what those gaps would cost us in terms of looking at ways to fund them, particularly with the schools in a 2.5 million dollar gap that they're facing, which is above and beyond what we were allocating to them, which was the 2.1 million, which would be about 3 cents on a tax rate. And then the new departmental request, if we looked at all of those at $8 million with what a penny is worth today, which is a little over 800-plus thousand, we would be looking at like a 10 cent increase as well as the other items that we received. And we wanted to make sure that we did showcase those so that you will have an opportunity to look at those items, which we looked at, the recommendations that we've received were about $4 million, which would be about 5 cents on a tax rate. If you look at the positions that were recommended, that will give you a snapshot of it, but that's not the total number. That's just salary without the benefits and as well as other things to furnish those folks offices. The equity fund, adding another million to that, as you can recall, we just added some funds to those from the year-end surplus, which was about, I think, what, 300,000? We had a balance of about 66,000, so that would take us to about 1.366 million dollars. The CHAP program, looking at 1.2, and I know we added some money into the year-end surplus from that also. If I can recall, oh, we didn't?
No, that was CAF.
CAF, okay.
That was the different one.
That's what I say in Charlotte, you need a dictionary for all the acronyms. The wages for being able to look at folks that are making under that $50,000 mark, we were looking at that and possibly be able to fund that overall throughout the city would be about another 500... would be about another $500,000. The participatory budgeting is a new program that was being introduced before, but I know that we've made some headway in terms of talking with the gentleman who has done that program before in another place, which would be about $200,000.
Do we still have that?
Where's the $100,000?
It's still sitting in there.
So, we have that?
We still have that, yes.
So, that's just an additional amount to it. The Minority Business Equity Fund, I know that's at 300,000. And then, the Human Services Emergency Assistance Fund, now, I know that's at $250,000, I know we just added. We went from 85,000 as a, which has been budgeted over the last few years, as well as just adding 130,000 more to it from the year-end surplus. And, this is adding another $250,000 to that. So, when you add that up, that, you know, is a big increase. And then, the council strategic initiatives, and adding another $250,000 to that. So, these are all the things that we haven't accounted for yet. As you can see, when you add them up, that's about 18 cents on the tax rate. So, we can discuss those also.
So, I have a question about the, so the departmental submissions came in at 8.1 million.
Operational.
Operational.
Not for new requests?
Not new requests.
Right.
So, that would be like changes in travel, meals, office supplies, that kind of stuff?
And so, then, the 8 million in new request, and of those new requests, 213,000 is what's being funded?
Correct. And then, just, I'm still trying to piece together the history of, like, the schools' funding. And so, in years past, we've given them more than what the calculation has illustrated. And then, that is then our new base from which we move. So, to say that all, a certain amount of real estate is a certain percentage, there's not a formula for overall, like, what they, we should be allocating, but this is always like the incremental amount, the percentage of incremental new revenues, they get that percentage. So, can you just speak to that? I'm just, I'm still trying to kind of ground myself on how that inflates.
Yeah, so Ryan has a table that we can pop up to, actually. We have, there, there is a budget guideline that council adopts that basically says, we allocate 40% of new revenue to schools, 40% of real estate and personal property. The practice has been that whatever the, the budget was that was allocated in prior year, so, last year, I think it was 56, 57 million, then, that new revenue gets just added, whatever the 40% is, gets added on to that. So, Ryan has a table that'll show you what it would look like if we just had maintained, and, and as we know, we have historically given more than the 40%, and I'll let him speak to.
Okay, thank you.
So, sorry, I have to come back to the mic. So, what we, we're showing on this, and we went back, we started 10 years ago, just, we had to pick a point in time that said, if we started at 10 years ago, using that contribution as the base, and we looked at, if we had just given per the formula, the 40% and nothing else each year, the schools' funding would be at approximately $52.9 million of, of city contribution at, at this point. Now, as you know, we re, we reset the base each year. And so, what's being proposed is roughly $59.5 million is what's in the, the proposed budget with that $2.1 million increase over what they received last year. So, I know it's a little confusing, but if this is, if we start at FY '11 as the base year, and then say, you only get the 40% of the new revenue, that is what the contribution would have been if we had stuck to that formula? I have another.
The 59.5.
The, no, the 52.9 is what it would have been at if we had stuck to nothing but the 40%. And it's at, it will be, it's being proposed with the, the $2.1 million increase over last year's contribution to 59.5 million.
Does this include the 2.1? This doesn't include the extra 2.5?
That 59.5 does not include the, the additional $2.5 million.
This is what you've balanced right now, okay.
Mm-hmm, and so, that, that's just a snapshot there. And then, I did have one other chart to kind of show, sorry, these don't show very pretty. This particular chart does show, these are what the 40% increase, this chart is what the, sorry. What the 40% increase would have been each year, that's what the, the blue represents. And then, the red line shows what we actually contributed, and shows how we have contributed above that 40% mark each year, with the exception of FY '18. And that was kind of an anomaly, because we had proposed an additional $2 million to schools. And then, after we had already put out the proposed budget, we got that large commercial real estate increase that we were not expecting. And at that point, we didn't, we didn't do any increase there. And the schools had already proposed a budget within that $2 million increase. And so, we did not propose anything different. So, that's just another way to, to look at what we've traditionally done over the years, so.
And last year, we landed on a 3.4, because the original request was 3.9, I think, or 4?
I can't remember exactly what it was, it was, we met them in, somewhere in the middle, between the 2.3 and, and 3.4, there was some kind of a meeting in the middle of, of, of the ask and what we could, and what we actually provided. I'm not exactly sure the exact numbers on that, I'd have to go back and look, but.
Thank you, this, this is illustrative, I wouldn't mind having that.
We can, we can, we can send these.
Just put it in a PDF or something.
Yeah, we can put it in a PDF and send it in the chart.
Thank you.
So, going back quickly to the, the departmental request cuts. So, are, some of the feedback that we've been given, or that I've been given at least, is the departments don't feel like they're had, that they have not been cut. And so, I'm just trying to figure out why they may feel like they've been cut versus whether there have actually been any cuts, because I think that'll help with a lot of the comments that we may hear later.
So, in total, the departments are not less. There may be line items, such as there could have been overtime, that may have been reduced from what it was last year. But, the total departmental budget is not less than what it was in '20.
By department?
Correct. So, there would be, you know, the opportunity to reallocate if we, in, in going through the process, there, you know, because we started at zero base, people took the opportunity to look at their budgets and say, how do I optimally perform? And so, you know, whereas before, when we were looking at budgets and, you know, travel's a good one, you know, okay, I know I, I'm not able to increase my budget much. And so, I may only send six people to training. But, if we're looking at zero base, I'd like to send all 12 of my people to training. So, they added increases for training and travel and those kind of things. That's one example.
So, you're saying that they can reallocate within the dollar amount that's being allocated to the departments overall?
Yeah, that's what they can do, but also too, as I, as I told all the department directors, is to, you know, look at your overall expenditures and look at ways that you can decrease them, or look at the way you've been operating over years, and look at, you know, more, of a more efficient, effective way to handle your day-to-day operations. And when we talk about overtime, that's one of the things that we need to be able to get a handle on, because the overtime expenditures in certain areas, you know, they're, they've risen substantially. And I know that some departments, they have overtime already rolled in for different operations that they perform. But also too, you can look at it from other ways and mechanisms to be able to try to manage your day-to-day operations to, you know, be able to satisfy that without, you know, over exceeding your overall overtime.
But is there also like a recognition that when we have a trend of overtime over a long period of time, that it justifies a staffing change?
It could be staffing changes, it could be a number of things.
I'm just saying an increase in staff?
You could increase staff, but also too, you need to look at your other ways of your expenditures and how you, how you spend your overall budget. I mean, there could be a movement of people from one place to another, there could be, you know, looking at how we approve vacations. You know, we could look at other policies that's within various departments, you know. You may have some policies that need to be adjusted, whether it's a sick leave policy, whether it's your vacation policy, there's different ways that you can look at it. But I think with those, you know, to have those conversations with those directors and be able to define a way to be able to do that, I think that's, I think it is a path forward.
And this is one of the, because we had this conversation regarding the HR policies review, where some of the feedback from some of the departments was just making sure that those changes were still like employee-centered, you know. If there's someone in a department that's taking advantage of the system, I think that's very different from something that's necessary, that we need to figure out what that change should look like, that where the employees don't start feeling that they are not valued.
Yes, and we do understand that, and that's why when we looked at the policies and procedures manual, which, you know, was work, being worked on for a number of years, and to get to where we are today, to be able to almost have it complete, which I think is illegal now, we had all of the directors in a room, specifically in this room, and we took a vote based upon all the changes and different things that we were going to make to the policy procedures manual. So, you know, it was, everyone, you know, had an opportunity to speak their voices, and it was based upon a vote of all the directors and all the folks, all the constitutional officers who came to those meetings. Now, it's not finalized yet, as I said before, it goes through legal. And then, because of our policies, our overall policies, it still has to be vetted through the employees, so they'll have a chance to look through it too, and then the voice their opinions before it is moved on for final approval.
So, I'm just curious, what does that process look like? So, legal's got it right now, and then you're gonna?
We're gonna bring it back, we're gonna have a final discussion with the directors. And then, from that, we'll move it on to the employees, who'll have a number of days to review it. But I think we're gonna expand that because of how large the policy and procedures manual book is, to give them a chance to really read through it and really understand what those changes are. And, and that's before we move forward for, you know, final adoption.
And so, there would be some kind of feedback mechanism?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's part of the policies.
And an option for revision if necessary?
Yes.
So, then, okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, our esteemed commissioner of revenue wanted to point out, we had mistakenly, for the CHAP program, put the entire cost of the program of 1.2 million. It's actually, he pointed out to us that the actual increase from year over year that, that was proposed, that he was, had said she was approximately $343,000 with an additional $55,000 that would have to be, go towards real estate tax relief. So, total would be close to $400,000 change, that's the, the total amount, not the, the change.
Yeah, I had some notes.
That would, that would be, yeah, so I did want to bring, bring that, that up, because he just pointed that out to us.
And if, and if that is the case, when you look at 1.2 million, whatever that number may be, you're gonna have to take that out of our overall revenues, and you're gonna have to figure out a way, how do we recover to be able to, you know, backfill that 1.2 million dollars, or whatever that number may be.
Okay, I do have some comments about that, but I do want to just stay in order so I don't lose my train of thought. So, just with the CRB, and that includes allocation for potentially the two positions and benefits?
So, with the CRB, yes, and, and the other thing is, there is, depending, we put some money into CRB for the current fiscal year, and depending on when.
The 50,000?
Yeah, depending on when everything is up and running, we're anticipating there will potentially be some carryover to add to that. Same thing with Home to Hope and Office of Equity and Inclusion, because all those programs aren't fully up and running at, at this point, 100%. And there looks like there will be some carryover to some, some, some of those programs to be able to add to those amounts that we see there. Because I know there have been different amounts being used for Home to, Home to Hope, larger amounts, but there's, we were looking at, this would be the new money plus the carryover. Same thing with Office of Equity and Inclusion, this is the two positions, plus some carryover, plus the, the training. So, these are, these are the new, new dollar amounts, but there is some carryover we're anticipating, we're just not 100% sure exactly how much carryover there's gonna be for each one of these programs.
So, for instance, for Unity Days, when we had the conversation about the surplus, we were told that they wanted the marketing before. So, did they spend $15,000 in marketing last year?
Mr. Wheeler's can speak to that.
Yeah, but before he, he comes up, I know our city attorney wanted to make a comment.
Just to clarify on the human resources personnel policies, the city code 19-6 requires that the city manager has a public hearing with the employees at least five days before adoption, but I think we had talked about giving a 30-day.
Yeah, we're gonna expand the number of days.
Yeah, 30-day period.
30 days?
30-day period, yes.
And one thing on the CRB positions, I guess it would depend on what you're gonna hire. I mean, we have 150,000 in, but depending on what you would hire would be whether that would be two positions or not. I mean, that's the dollar amount, right?
That's what I'm asking, is this includes salary plus benefits?
So, that's just, we just have a lump sum in for CRB at 150 right now.
So, that doesn't seem sufficient, especially if we're telling the community that once the ED is in place, that they will be able to, if that audit position is something that they, the board and the ED recommends. So, I just want to make sure when we're making the, from the recommendations, that it's sufficient to cover what we've told the community.
Is there an estimate for that? Okay.
Not in my purview.
The year-end, we did the year-end sur, the year-end surplus, I know we put money in there for that, plus the 150. So, you should have enough in there to be able to fund that executive director, as well as to fund that individual person. We gotta figure out exactly how much we're gonna come in in terms of hiring that amount, in terms of hiring the director.
So, has that been done?
We're working through that now, as we speak, to try to be able to get that, move in for that position. But as we said before, you know, we're gonna be working to try to get the board established once you're done with the interviews, to be able to look at, you know, the overall cost that it would be. But I think 150 plus the 50 that we have, I think that'd be sufficient to get us through, because we know that, you know, that position director will probably be hired prior to or close to the end of this fiscal year. And then, that'll take some time for that person to be, be able to look at what they need in terms of the hiring of the, of the person. So, I think that it'll be enough funding to get us through '21. And if not, you know, I'll come back to the council to say, I need to make a budget, you know, adjustment in terms, or amendment, to be able to do that. But, I think we have enough funds to be able to supplement that if it is the case.
But I don't know what you would make adjustments from based on this presentation?
Well, you do have some lag in positions throughout the fiscal year. I mean, some people may not hire folks, or you talk about attrition in other areas. So, you know, you will have some money to be able to fund that position if it is over that amount that we're projecting.
Mayor Walker, Brian Wheeler, Director of Communications, one of the staff that works on Unity Days. First, the number looking forward, 81,500 is for July 1 to June 30, so 2020 to 2021. We're recommending a focus of August 1 through 12 for the second year of Unity Days. The 15,000 that you just allocated from the surplus will be for the first six months of this year, where we had a gap. Last year, 2019, the first year of Unity Days, council allocated 100,000. That was fully expended for all the activities up through August. So, to keep the marketing going for Unity Days, keep that brand alive, we had a six-month gap in funding. We wanted to make sure we could do some activities during the first part of this year. But that, we think, is a number moving forward that would be an annual commitment.
The 81 versus the 100?
Correct, yep. And we generally have split it 75,000 for program needs, I mean, 75% and then 15, 25% for marketing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good times.
Actually, I want to, Ms. Hill, I want to respond to a question that you brought up earlier, because our Director of Finance was able to send us that, kind of a one-page out, on the real estate. The new construction accounted for about 0.75% of the overall increase. And between the two, residential reassessment was about 3.7% increase, and commercial was about 10.46% increase.
I'm sorry, a proportion of all the new revenues from real estate?
So, these are just the, we would have to filter through the, because I just wanted to let you know that the percentage increase in residential was, residential reassessment was approximately 3.7%. Commercial reassessment was approximately 10.4, 10.5. And then the new construction, the percent change based on new construction was about 0.75%.
I see what you're saying now, okay.
So of the total, I believe they have, we have the 7.22% overall total increase in general reassessment, 7.75 of that was new construction.
So the, this sheet here, what's not included was neither in the 13.8 million or the 7 million gap. Like, this total was, has never been considered in any of the past allocate, gap that you all have been working to figure out how to bridge. Correct, okay. So, and I'll just talk about, just before we open up for whatever other questions that are there. I did make these recommendations, there were also like dates aligned with the Office of Equity Director and the CRB included. And I guess because you all moved them to the other list, that they're not on there, but-
I didn't put those in because they were-
Be happening in this fiscal year.
Yes, yeah. So I did make the recommendation for the Deputy City Manager, and I've talked about that publicly, and I just have questions about since we lost a city manager, has that position been eliminated from the vacant position, been eliminated from the budget?
No.
Deputy City Manager, yes.
No, what we did was, we just moved a Paul Oberdorfer into that vacant position. The other one, we're still paying for that position. So, you know, the Deputy City Manager of Equity and Human Services, I mean, that's totally on y'all, but for me, as far as staffing, you know, that wasn't one of my recommendations, coming from my office.
Oh, I know, that's why, it says me.
Okay, all right.
So my thought surrounding that was just the commitment that we say we have to Equity and Human Services, and making sure that somebody is in that place, position, that fully understands that commitment and can work on behalf of the citizens, and also work with the HR Director to align that internally, and also the commitment externally. The Director of Measurements and Solutions, that is there because we spent a lot of money, millions of dollars, allocating to programming that we have no idea in terms of outcome and output, whether we should continue allocating those millions of dollars. And so that is why I made that recommendation, because some, we have to figure out a way to measure the programs, to make sure that taxpayer money is being spent in an efficient way, and as effectively as possible, and we haven't, you know, figured that out. In terms of the equity fund, that million dollars was allocated originally from where? Because that, that was in the budget previously?
Oh, that was, that came from a year-end-
From a surplus?
Year-end surplus, yes.
Okay. And so, a lot of those funds, as you have noted, in this, had been spent to some programming that was helping with, again, this equity commitment that we said we had, and that's why that was there, because it has originally been allocated before my term. Very passionate about the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Affordability Program. And again, that number wasn't the number that I had for what the increase would look like, and-
Which was about 400K, right?
He said roughly 400,000. And that would be to bring the first bracket, which would be individuals who don't, you have, to 30, okay. Thank you.
I knew I was gonna have to get up here. I'm Todd Divers, and the Commissioner of Revenue. Yeah, you gave us two proposals, and so I kinda teased out the numbers, and we figured that the first proposal would bring the upper income threshold, where it currently is at $55,000 for household income per year, to 60,000. If we do that, and do a commensurate change to the real estate tax relief program, we're looking at another $400,000, basically, between the two programs. I'm expecting, currently, I think I've got budgeted 930,000 for CHAP under the existing parameters, and 725,000 budgeted for real estate tax relief, under the existing parameters.
And can you talk a little bit about, because that's less than the projected from last year?
Yeah, I think what I, we're doing, because these programs cross over fiscal years, in other words, you know, the money's given out in a calendar year rather than a fiscal year, I probably underestimated, or overestimated last year what it was gonna be.
Okay.
And how does that, what is the home value threshold that we've got right now?
For CHAP, it's 375, and that's based on a VHDA requirement that's in the city charter. I checked it yesterday, it's still 375, so we can't raise it higher than 375, correct?
Okay. Because I had put 400.
Yeah, I checked it yesterday.
Then the dress wage and compensation issues for employees who currently earned under 50,000, with the ultimate goal of the next step would be to 75,000. But I am interested whether council is in agreement with looking at that, is having some information upfront about what that looks like in the future. I know we're waiting for the comp study, but we know that we're gonna have these issues, and that we're gonna have to start somewhere. And I'm just wondering what those, what conversations are happening surrounding that. The participatory budgeting, again, there was $100,000 allocated that hasn't been spent yet, we just confirmed. And that was a program that we were hoping to put in place to help citizens be able to influence our budget decisions more. And it's something that I think council at the time was very supportive of, and hoping in the future that the citizens could have a more of an impact on the overall budget, not just $100,000 or $200,000. The Minority Business Fund, what, was $100,000 allocated to that? And did that come out of the-
That initially came out about a year, it was actually pretty close to a year ago today, February 19th of last year, it was approved, 109,000 out of the council's strategic initiatives side.
And so council just supported this task force. And while we had a board meeting a week or so ago, and they think that, you know, there would be benefit in having that amount at about $200,000, based on what was spent last year, were they able to submit that as a budget proposal? Or did that even come in as a new department request from Economic Development? No? Okay, Chris says no. And the Human Services Emergency Assistance Fund, we talked about that during the surplus of, yes, it's more than we've been allocating, close to $85,000, but the need. And then the council's strategic initiatives, and we are combining, but I just wanted to, it was intended to be two separate things, so I just kept them there.
And participatory budgeting, a lot of the groundwork was laid for how that would be done? I think, aside from dollars, like, everything was kind of set up in terms of the structure that that would take. So it's just a matter of if we were to get the staffing to kind of support that program? Because we have the 100,000 that's there.
Yes, the 100,000 is there, the staffing was there to support it. It was the community that wasn't supporting us. So we would call meetings, and we couldn't get the community to participate. And so when Leslie left, the former Deputy City Manager for Administration, we put the program on hold until we could revamp the process again.
Okay.
But the bylaws and everything have been put in place for the program.
Thank you. And then the Measurements and Solutions, we've talked about this next calendar year is when there's a group that's gonna be put together to really-
Advisory group?
Right, to look at that directly. So you're not feeling like that we have the staff capacity with that advisory group, kind of doing a lot of that work?
No, I think that we won't know until we get, I mean, they are looking at it from ABRT. But even, this is something that I had discussed with Dr. Richardson, even before I mentioned these proposals, we've had discussions about it. And you even thought, long-term, this would be a position that you staff?
Yes, but I know what-
I know on a timeline, is what you said. But I just wanted also make clear that I didn't just submit, like, the Deputy City Manager of Equity without, when we met, having discussions about why I thought that was valuable. So we had discussed that, and the group of volunteers, and then staff members. It may work, but, you know, there was just some conversation about whether it would work.
Okay. So I guess right now, from us, I mean-
We're not done.
We still have two more slides.
Oh, that's right, agencies.
Two more slides. So at our, at the council retreat back a couple weeks ago, on the 23rd of January, we came to you and asked for a little more guidance on the community agency process, and explained, this is how they had been kind of categorized, based on the, on the new format that we were doing this year. We're proposing a $200,000 increase to FY '21 to approximately 2.3 million dollars. I know there was a discussion about potentially 2.4 million dollars. We look at that, we looked at that amount, and when we were making our reductions, this was one area where we initially had that in and had to reduce that. Part of that was because the $200,000 increase represents essentially a 14.2% increase to the pot. And we're, that's three and a half times larger than the overall percentage of our budget increase, and three times larger than, and then the overall departmental increase. We like to, we know we can't always keep those even, but we try to keep those, like, if the departments are going up 3%, we want to make sure the agencies are going up a proportional amount. And so that was one area where we felt like, for an equity, internal equity standpoint, this was an area where we looked at a little bit of a reduction. With that being said, this is a reminder of the total funding requests. And then we told you we would come back with two different scenarios for you to consider on how to fund these agencies. Came up with, with two different scenarios, both at slightly over 2.3 million dollars. The first one, the one kind of consensus we felt that we heard was for the essential exemplary programs to be funded at 100%. That was those 20 programs, about 1.5 million. That, we felt like there was some consensus around that. And then there was also consensus around doing the essential and doing some important. So the first scenario funds the exemplary important at 75%, and the solid essential at 85%, giving a slightly heavier weight to those programs that are considered essential, gives, this is 85% of their initial ask. This does not necessarily correspond to what they got in prior years. So it could be, even at 85%, it could be an increase to, increase or decrease, it depends on the agency. The other option, we still fund the essential important, or essential exemplary at 100%, but we also look at slightly lower percentages for the important exemplary and the essential solid. But what it does allow us to do is bring in 12 additional programs at 50% of their ask, which again, could still be an increase over what they received in prior years, in that important solid category. So slightly less percentages for some of these agencies, in terms of their overall ask, but brings in more agencies, so that, that was kind of the two different ones. And the group did, with, looking at the capacity building, we didn't have a whole lot of information at that time, they were still reviewing it. They went through it, and based on what, the review of those applications, in the neighborhood of 55,000 to 60,000 is what that group is gonna recommend for the various capacity building grants. So we were able to work that into this 2.3 million scenario. Now, I know there was a lot of discussion around not knowing the agencies and kind of doing this blind, and what I want to point out is, we do have a full work session on September, or, excuse me, March the 26th, on agencies, at which time you will see all the agency names and funding amounts related to that, and there can be a larger discussion around that at this time. We wanted to, this was just a, get a general framework around how we go about the initial funding, and then after that, obviously, we always have that larger discussion. So I wanted to point out, there is, this is just the initial framework, so that we can have something to present you, a plan to present you to react upon in the city manager's proposed budget, and then you can, as we always do in that work session, make changes, ask questions, and look at that differently.
And just to reiterate, like, this is a million dollars that we can fulfill less than what was requested. So we were asked for 3.26 in requests, and we're only looking at funding 2.3. Just want to reiterate.
And the 2.3, the two, why do the $200,000 increase?
So, again, as I was saying, when we were going through and making reduction-
Just if this-
Oh, go ahead. I would say, as we're going through, and we were looking at, we built these scenarios around a dollar amount, the 2.3 million dollars. And again, we went with 200,000 as opposed to the 300,000 as kind of an internal equity thing, because it is still a large increase, percentage-wise and dollar-wise, to the overall pool, especially, much larger than what we've been able to do in the past. And so that's why we did that. If we had done the entire 300%, we would have been looking at, you know, an over 20% increase, like, roughly 21% increase to the, to that pool of funds, and which was larger than what we've ever done in the past. And so it was just a call we had to make when we were trying to close that 7.5 million dollar gap. So that's why we went with 200 as opposed to 300, but I-
Right, because if we're, if we're giving a certain percentage internally, to give multiple times that percentage for external partners, it's hard to justify.
And that's one of the, back to the schools budget versus our budget, if we are looking at COLA increase of only 2%, and they have in their budget at 3%, did we run numbers at a higher percentage, or we didn't?
For our COLA, I mean, we did not, we looked at 2%.
At the time, we did not know that schools were looking at 3%.
But two, when's the last time we've done? I mean, and I'm asking this and reminding that the percentage from last year, I questioned a lot, but just wondering.
So what, what's been the history of our-
History, yes.
Sure, I've actually got a file with that, if you give me a second, I can pull that. But overall, excuse me, we've been, our average increase has, if it would pull up, sorry. We've been looking at, we did 2% on most years across the board. And then in 2019, we did 3%, and 2020, we did 4.17%. But in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 years prior to that, 2012 to 2018, with the exception of one year where we did not give any salary increases in 2013, we were looking at roughly 2% across the board increases that we gave to staff. So that's been kind of more, more on the norm. Prior to that, we were in a much better financial situation, and we were able to give 4% every year, but then, you know, obviously, in 2009, 10, that area, you know, the recession set in, and we had, had to look at things differently on what we were doing as far as our staffing. and we had, had to look at things differently on what we were doing as far as our staffing increases or our general wage increases, I should say.
So you want direction from us on this?
Yeah, I, I just, I guess kind of, this is, is one piece where if we look at those, obviously, you know, there's still room to, to make adjustments in, in the future. But just as us, for us to use as a starting point to, to move forward, how, what the consensus among council is among those particular scenarios.
For me, I'm, you know, after thinking about this a little bit and being a little nervous about voting on this blindly, I'm comfortable with us leaving in the 2.0, you know, 3. But I think the best of options about the 200,000 in relation to everything else. But I do... So if we took the $200,000 increase and potentially put that in the measurements and solutions staff member? No?
No.
Again, we're funding things that we don't know whether they work. And we won't know just because of the vote, but we're still not making the commitment to...
But I feel like we have with this plan, this two-year plan, we knew we would take kind of a step to get there. But we are going to engage this group to...
Which is just looking at the vibrant community fund. And you're talking about someone who would look at this across the organization?
I mean, if council wanted to hold the...
Not, I would say not yet. Not yet based upon our, you know, positioning right now, financial, our financial position right now. And I would say just hold tight on that.
So could you tell me a little bit about how that would be different from like making an investment in someone who would be able to tell us whether we're spending the money effectively long-term versus giving it to some of the groups where we don't know whether they're being affected?
I understand that. I think that we do need to be able to do that, but to fund it to the tune of a director position, I don't think that was, that's something that we need.
Well, that's, I'm not, I don't know. I, I was just putting it out there to have a discussion. Maybe it's something else, man, I don't know.
It could be something else, but yeah, yeah. And I'm, and I'm agreeing with that. It could be something else, but I would rather have it as a staff position as, I guess it would be like more like, what would we say, like an analyst or someone like that to be able to do it at a much lesser salary than it would be for a directorship. But putting it in now, you know, in the budget based upon the, the cuts that we had to, to make, I don't think that that would be, you know, the right thing to do at this moment. I think we can, we can do another year and look at it again in the '22 budget.
So what I'm just asking for us to consider is instead of the increase there, then putting that money up to something that will help us longer term, makes, ensure that we are spending this money in a way that benefits the community best. So we keep having this discussion about are we using these hundreds of millions of dollars effectively? And I'm just trying to get to a point of how do we have someone on staff answering that question? So we are not, because even, I'm sure these 3.2 million dollar worth of requests, there are going to be people who are going to spend a lot of time talking to us about why we need to fund 3 million versus 2 million, right? And if we're saying that we're keeping it consistent with what it has been, but that it is from a city position that we need someone in place to make sure that the, maybe it's not 2 million, maybe it's, you know, this 2 million can be redirected to something else. But if we don't, if we never get a person involved to tell us whether we are doing the right thing with these funding, then we'll just may, be making all our decisions off of passion versus something that's really effective.
Or do you take this 2.3 million dollar allocation and reduce it by the number it would cost to put a person in that position rather than increasing it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So this increase in this $200,000 that we're saying proposing $200,000 increase, right?
So 2.3 to 2.1?
Yes. So we reduce that just by the increase amount this year to, to focus on getting that staff person in place to not just for vibrant community funds, but for the money that we spend throughout the city. Because if we're talking about how we're spending money, where I don't think we should start, you know, making the cuts is when we're talking about things related to staff and equity. We have these major projects coming up related to schools, housing and the compensation. And we know they're going to be big ask. And if we're crunching numbers like this this year, what does that look like overall? We spend a lot of money, a lot of grant money on programming and we just don't have those answers in terms of, you know, a person who's solely dedicated to assessing how we're spending the money.
And I, and I would say it also kind of falls in line as we look at redoing our strategic plan, having real measures for how things are against our goals. And so I see that, I also see it as a, an organizational cultural issue that it can't be any one person that can just do all those things, but we have to make, I mean...
But that one person can...
Take the lead?
Yes, and make the recommendations.
I'm curious, I'm trying to visualize what sort of a person, either in terms of academic credentials or work experience or whatever that we're, we would be thinking of for, for this position. Either if you want to call it a director, you want to call it an analyst. I'm, I'm trying to visualize what, what kind of person that would be.
We would say an analyst, a management analyst.
Is that somebody who comes, I mean, got, what, what sort of experience or job or academic credentials? Or I'm just trying to visualize what, who, who we would be hiring.
And I, and I think, let me, let me just say this. And as I know, I, I know that it's something that's probably a need right now. But as I mentioned before, I mean, we're going through this whole process of looking at, you know, our overall strategic plan and everything like that. Would this be one of those things where we talk about at that time to further define it? Because right now, I mean, what, what would the job description look like? What would you have that person exactly doing? So...
And I think that the skill set that's required for someone who's supporting like these agency decisions might be different than the operational decisions that we're making. It's just, to me, it's a different skill set. So I have a hard time saying it's one person, but you know, it's part of a role for maybe multiple people. And that's why I think it has to trickle throughout the organization, be part of our culture, around how we look at things and that we're going to be measuring things. Because I do feel that measuring in our current strategic plan is, is not, is very limited, how we're measuring our success. Do we have thoughts on this, these options for these agencies aside from that part in terms of...
So if we had this work session in March, it would be based around basically one of these two scenarios?
I think they're asking us to choose now.
Uh huh, which, to choose which scenario we're going to want to have presented to us in March.
Right, for, because we have a, we'll put the agencies with the baseline funding in there. And then at that work session in March, there's always a discussion of increases, decreases, agencies that were left out. All of those things will come into play when we have, have those discussion. That's always very vocal community when it, when it comes to, to making these decisions. So I'm sure your council will get plenty of input from the community on those areas. But we need to at least have some kind of a starting point to, to base those, those recommendations off of.
Of course, the practical effect of these two different scenarios is that in the second scenario, 12 programs get something that they don't get in the first scenario. And we have no idea who those 12 agencies are.
Yeah, I mean, and I...
So in terms of sort of objective intellectualization, I guess I would have a, a preference for the first scenario. But it's not a strongly held one because I, I don't really have a feel for how this is going to work in practice.
As I recall from our retreat, one of the points of redoing the Vibrant Communities Grant, formerly known as the A B R T grant, was that program or nonprofits could look at what their actual real need is to try to actually move the needle on something. And that while the small, the amounts that they were getting were worked into the, to their budgets, it wasn't measurable yet as to whether or not what they were doing was really impacting. And so while part of me says, hey, yes, go ahead, try to get 12 more programs funded, it seems like the whole point of this change was to actually give larger amounts to very specific programming within guidelines that were set up as to what we were looking at this year. And because of that, I would want to go with the first section.
And so I'll just speak a little to that since I was on that. What you're saying is it was more geared from a community perspective of what, you know, the needs were. And then to fund these organizations fully versus partially to see if they were making the impact they said that they were going to make or could make based on their mission.
And just to, to kind of build on that point that the merit was making, this was one, this was as we went through this process, this was always one where we looked at it. We said, you know, this is going to be a long process and this could look very different when we come back to, to you a year from today. Because this is, this is the first step in the process to, towards redoing that entire agency process. But you know, we came, when we came to council, we said, look, this could, you know, the way we were doing this, this could result in some agencies that have traditionally been funded being left out. And it could also result in some agencies that have, that have always said, we need more, we need more, you're not giving us enough to actually get that amount that they say, hey, this is what we really need to make difference. So that's kind of how, how we set up these scenarios in that way so that we could make that first step. And you know, the measurements and solutions that we're, we're talking about, group that's coming up, you know, that's, you're kind of moving along that evolutionary process. That's kind of the next step, kind of that phase two of this process. And so we're going to continue down that road and we, this may look very, we may have very different matrices when we come to you next year, but this is at least, you know, that first step.
Well, and again, I just, you know, I obviously wasn't on council and involved with this process and when it began and just have a hard time making a decision with this limited amount of information. It sounds like the majority is to go with the first scenario. But again, my concern, which may not be merited because I just don't have that much information, but my concern again is that, you know, nonprofits are filling out grant applications, having received money from a local government, regardless of the amount, can be important in determining whether their grant receives matching funds. And the concern whether, you know, we could inadvertently create a scenario where, how do we filter out donating some small amount of money to a nonprofit because we feel like we wanted to give them something for political reasons? It's not effective versus some small amount we were giving to a nonprofit allows them to get substantial amount of grant funding? And are we cutting that opportunity for them to get grant funding off? And how do we just filter that out? And again, you know, a totally theoretical example, it's not real at all. But again, like let's say you had a nonprofit like Sinberrera has put an application for $5,000. They don't get it because it's not in the sweep funded 100%. And then because they get nothing, they don't get any matching grant funding. Have we met our goal of equity? Again, I don't know whether that's even a merited concern, but...
And we could also put some money up to if those emergency type of situations arise throughout the year that we can review those.
And traditionally, and I will say traditionally, that was the reason the council strategic initiatives fund was started for specifically kind of one-time things or an instance where they're, like as you said, the session come up and says, we've lost funding, we need to show the local funding to, in order to be able to, to maintain this level of, of support. That's traditionally what, what that council initiatives have been along with other one-time festivals and things that, that come out throughout the year. So there would be some flexibility, especially, you know, like we said, we've got currently $364,000, I believe it is, in that account. So that, that would allow some flexibility to do exactly what you're talking about. But Khaki's here and she can speak to that specific issue because we did, I think, believe she did discuss that with some of the agencies and some of the participants, so.
So you were talking about matching, like a matching grant or... So initially, we thought that was very important, that that was going to be a critical component. And actually, the work group identified four separate sort of funding pools that a nonprofit might access in that it would include the sort of general operating, sort of less than 25 and addressing a strategic goal of the city or more than 25,000, addressing one of our priority areas, capacity building, startup funds and then matching grants. And what, we then talked to nonprofits in the community and they said that it wasn't actually that critical of a need for them to get matching grants. And so they were able to be planful about those. We heard more consistently the need for nonprofits to have some sort of local contribution to demonstrate a local commitment to their services.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Right, and so not necessarily around matching. And so we haven't figured out how to sort of make a nominal contribution to a nonprofit that would serve that purpose versus something that would be more significant, a larger sort of move the needle kind of amount of money. And so what's in front of you is sort of step one of a multi-step process to move away from this sort of standard, sort of everybody gets a little bit and close to the same amount sort of over time to moving towards a more flexible pool of funding for the council to decide how to address it every year based on what the community reports and what are the data shows as an emerging trend or sort of a primary community need. So this is step one. And I hear, I hear you talking about ways in which we might have, we might be at step five, but we're not quite there yet.
So we could, instead of increasing it, use the, set aside the 200,000 or some portion of it if those needs come up through the year?
We could. I think, you know, we have sort of made some assurances to the community that we might sort of do something closer to what the, what we described we were going to do for the year, which is like a mid, mid-step in terms of the change process. But we didn't, we didn't talk about what an amount was. And we could certainly go back and look and say, you know, during the work session, you all made a pretty strong commitment to being interested in the exemplary essential category. And then, you know, you could start there and then say, use your, the funding that's around the buffer to do something else with that. I think you've already identified the fact that there will be a lot of disappointed nonprofits and you will no doubt hear from them around that issue. But that's certainly something you could do. Thank you.
So, I have to say, this, building off that, to this point, I've had two people say this, they feel a little more comfortable with the first scenario. There's, I just, I just need notes. I, I need to be able to put, if, if there's an agreement that, hey, let's make this 2.2, you know, build off of these scenario one, but make it 2.2 and leave $100,000 to nibble around the, the edges, that's easy for me to just say, okay, well, fine, we cut 5% off of this and this and we're, we're there. Like we can do something like that if that's the more palatable option to leave that flexibility to leave a...
How do you feel about that?
I'm not necessarily against it, but again, I just find it really hard to make a decision not knowing the amount of money that may or may not be needed for that need of just having a nominal amount of support from a local government to get other grants. I'm not opposed to it, but again, I just, I just feel like I don't have much information to make like a blanket policy of this category 100%, et cetera. But I'm not opposed to it either. I just, I, you know, I'm certainly open to that.
Yeah, I know, I think what we're saying is that we don't have that information. But if we want to, if that's a concern that you want to address, then we can put a certain amount of dollars up to address that when nonprofits come forward.
Sure, I'm fine being presented with that scenario.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm having a hard time and I was in the room with not having all the information. But I think, you know, it'll be interesting once, you know, when we have the work session. But I think if we make the decision, we should, and this is something that Councilor Snook was struggling with, like making that decision without blindly.
But in prior years, there has been a recommendation by the, the group that's convened... But in prior years, there has been a recommendation by the, the group that's convened. And then it's for us to consider. And so I'm trying to think how different this scenario is. We have to tell you how to allocate the funds based on these metrics, which is another, I guess we're actually more involved this time than we have been in the past. Because before you had an amount and you would allocate it out and we would see it and we would then be fighting over these little bits and it always became an ad and that was always a struggle. And I think that this is really speaking to what all of our conversations were in the last year going through the revamping of this process. And I just think that kind of making a decision like this and then still having the opportunity to see the information and then tweaks can be made, just like they have been in the years past. I think it is showing a, a commitment to really trying to focus on those areas where we think we can do the greatest change in addressing our priorities. So I'm, I'm in favor of the first scenario and I'm fine with pulling out whatever 100,000 to be nimble and flexible with as, as needs come up that need municipal match or, or sorry, municipal contributions. But I'm not sure what that number is, but I'm fine with that proposal.
So I think, should we go with the higher amount in case the, it's not enough? Because where do we get additional, if it's not enough, where do we get the money from?
I mean, the, one of the things that, that was a struggle this year with this process was we, in essence, took the, I don't know, took, took the restraints off of the agencies as far as what they could ask for. And in prior years, we had, we were not looking at 3.2 million or 3.6 million. I can't remember exactly what the, the amount was worth of, of requests. But that, that 3.2 number was, you know, the part, they, they were new. They could get no more than maybe 5 to 10% increase. So that, so that the amount we were talking about what was being requested versus what was actually being proposed was a lot different. Because of all these process changes, it's ma, it's ma, going to make it more of a difficult conversation. But it's, it's a prioritization, it's a prioritization exercise with council saying we prioritize this over this when, when we get to that point. And I mean, I know it's not, it's not always pretty and it's not always easy. But I mean, that's kind of what it's come down to at this point, based on what the information we have in front of us.
And I think it's important for us to do it this way. I just, you know, you have to just put a lot of trust in staff, the work group, the whole process.
If I was sitting in your seat, I'd have, I'd be really struggling with the decision as well because, I mean, how do you make that decision seeing it a, a blind thing? And I have tried my hardest not to look at what agencies are in any of these groups so that I am not in any way biased by any of that, but just looking at this overall picture like, like you are to try to put myself in your shoes a little bit more. I mean, I know I reviewed them, but.
So one possibility, if we wanted to try to have some money sort of set out, not completely committed, would be if we were to take the solid essential programs down to 70% and the exemplary and important programs down to 65%. In other words, down 10% each, that gets us about another $96,000.
Yeah. If you told me 2.2, that, that's probably the route I was going to come back and, and take to look at that, to make that, get that back down there. But yes.
I mean, without, I mean, I know we, I mean, without reading for me the application, knowing the difference between the essentials and whether even funding those seven programs at the 100% versus the important at all.
Well, and, and again, I mean, I think another factor in this that makes it hard is that grant writing is, not grant writing, but, you know, requesting money like this is, in a way, no matter what the rules are, it's a little bit of a game. And people are going to be strategic about perhaps asking more than they think they'll get. And how does that interact with saying we're going to fund it at 100% if it's evaluated in a certain criteria? But again, I mean, it sounds like the majority will is to move forward with scenario one with 100,000 set aside. Unless I could, that's, that's what I was picking up.
So I guess my hope there is that with the task force that has been, well, we've appointed, I think, all of the members? Yes? Missing one. That will come up, that the, the measurement part of this will be different than it has been in the past. So if they are not meeting the needs of the community members, they just won't be able to say, and as they have in the past, that we have historically received this funding. I don't know.
All right. Evaluation was different this year. I mean, it was done, it was one step in the direction that we, we talked about for the last year. So it wasn't like it was the same evaluating process as the previous time. All right.
So I think we've got, got the decision we need here.
And I just want to just point out that for the task force, the measurement and solution task force, to your question, they want, it was asked two members with professional data analysis expertise, including a background in economics, social science, and public policy. Two members with the community organizing experience and two at-large members and one council member. So that's what the task force is being established. I still would like to talk about more at some point. I know we have to open it up for public comment and then have time to address those. But even with, with some of that funding being used for that position.
I did want to bring up one last thing because I, I have to, yes, I have to, I have to say, now with real estate, we can always go down moving forward. We don't have to advertise to go down, but if there's.
And that's what we did last year, right?
We, we looked at, yeah, we advertised at the higher rate and then we ended up, we, I think we advertised at two cents above and then we ended up actually only, we're keeping it at 95.
No, and not going.
So we get, so if, so the, the question is, is there any desire to advertise or raise the, the real estate rate? And then we can always go back, but we cannot go up. As of, after Monday, we're not going to be able to go up on the real estate rate because we have to get that ad into the paper. So that's the, the, kind of the one big piece of feedback that's hanging out there that we need. And I, and I've given you all of three minutes to do that before public comment, so enjoy.
So I think that last year, we decided not to increase the rate. I want to figure this out this year without increasing that rate if possible. But I think what the decision point was last year was that we would do it, advertise it just in case it was needed.
I can't see myself getting around it regardless, so.
I mean, it seems worth doing just to have maximum flexibility. You know, I agree with, with Mayor Walker, certainly. My intention is to get through this process without increasing the real estate tax. But maximum flexibility, just in a worst-case scenario, I'm not uncomfortable with just advertising it for that reason.
Second on that.
I, yeah, I guess.
Two cents.
Two?
That's, that's fine with me.
I, I think I agree largely for the reasons you've expressed. I'm, I am not, I'm not interested in raising real estate taxes. But I also know that if we're going to be able to respond to the schools in any way, I don't know where else it would come from. And we're going to have to identify some other cuts. They want 2.5 million dollars. Obviously, we don't have to, 2.5 more than the 2.1 we're already going to give them. That's right.
You know?
And we'd have to be three cents to get fully there. I don't know. I, I'm, like I say, I'm not interested in doing it particularly. But the one thing that might change my mind somewhat is the schools.
I do have one question about the real estate tax rate in this, in the table that you have on here. This $824,771, is that the full amount? Or is that our amount after 40% has been given to the schools?
I'm glad you brought that up. That is the full amount?
Okay.
So, I mean.
So we'd get about 500,000 out of that?
If we go by the formula you have in that ballpark.
Okay.
But we would also have been giving 300,000 to the schools. And if that's the motivation for raising the tax rate, it's just a question of which hand gives it to them.
Just making sure it's clear.
So we, we go ahead and do the ad with the, the advertisement at two cents to get, to provide flexibility. But with this, or did we want to do, I thought I heard two cents from most people I've seen. It said two, or Council McGill, sorry, says two.
I'm fine with two.
Two. Council Hill says no. And I didn't, so we can, we can do that, start with the two? Okay.
And when I say I'm fine with two, I'm fine with advertising.
Understood, understood.
And so just, was there another question? No. So back to the list of things. We'll advocate the entire time for us to look at would be the CHAP program. And if we can talk about, because again, we're talking about how to keep low-income homeowners, which right now is up to $55,000 a year in annual income in their homes. And so we talk about the increase in tax, the increase in assessments and just the overall cost of living here and what that means. And so even if we don't increase it to the 60,000, I mean, I, if, Todd, if you can send that information so that the entire council can look, um, look at it, but. Yes, mhm. So, so that we can have that discussion because it's usually, in the past, it's just been here so we could see it. With the wages and compression issue, I still just think we need to know upfront what even after we spend the 1.2 million on the study, what the implementation for that looks like if we are crunching numbers like this and where we're going to get the money from. The participatory budgeting, that $100,000 that we haven't spent yet. But I would like to see us commit to getting that palette going this year.
With the money we already have, yeah.
With the money, yeah, that we have. You know, the equity fund, their business is applying to that partnership. So even if it's just continuing where it is at the $100,000 and the human services, there's no need for us to put the 130 into this and not have money starting July. And again, those requests was for $182,000. So just staff to come back, what, you know, at least tell us like, you know, what is possible. And then the three, if we are going to talk about increasing the schools' funding for this two, additional 2.5 million and what that looks like, which if we're going to advertise at 2% and this says three, I mean, two cent and this says three, that's already problematic. But with the schools having in their budget a 3% COLA, it's no way that we should only give our employees a 2%. So we either need to have that conversation with the schools about coming to 2% or we need to figure out how to go to 3%, but it needs to be fair, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with that. I think that we should both be at the same amount. But when you look at, you know, the CHAP program, I just want to say, if you increase that, it's going to further impact the amount of revenues that we bring into the city. So that's going to.
Yeah, no, we've known that all along, but we are talking about, again, longer term, how do we keep homeowners who are being pushed out of the city in their homes? And how do, we are talking about, you know, the percentage of our employees who can't even live within the city limits. Like, the employees we're talking about under this $50,000 would be employees who would be eligible for CHAP. I mean, when you're talking about equity overall, it takes a commitment to funding it.
I also want to mention, like, I certainly recognize the homeownership component, but when we're looking at these increases, if you don't think that landlords are passing on these increases to their tenants and many of those tenants are of low income when we are raising our tax rate, then we are just missing, you know, a big swath of, of this need.
I mean, it's a whole, I, I think another important dynamic in all of it is I certainly don't share a desire at all to a real estate tax rate. I mean, half my income goes to rent. I know there's a lot of other people in a similar situation, either renters and homeowners. But it should be said, I think, the thing that's hurting people the most is the rise in assessments, which we don't control. Whether we, if we reduce the real estate tax, the rise in assessments would still be having overwhelmingly the biggest negative impact on people, more than that real estate tax rate.
But we can reduce the rate.
But it still wouldn't come close to making up the impact of the assessments. I just think it's an important point to make. What's squeezing people is the assessments more so than that real estate tax rate. Obviously, it has an impact, but the assessments are what's overwhelming, that increase in cost.
And when you talk about equity initiatives like this, we're talking about homeowners who are applying to stay in their homes.
I agree, I agree. I would, I would like for us to be able to support that request. Like, I'm just saying that when we're talking about increasing our rate, we have to recognize.
Oh, you know, me and the two cents. Oh, yeah, I understand.
Sorry. All right.
Well, and.
But what, one thing that we haven't done, I think, or that I haven't seen is just evaluating overall what's working. You can't start talking about, like, even the stuff, you know, the information we received for the DMC report. To have that discussion, you would have to say, where is the money going to come from to implement programming that can reduce the disparities and disproportionality that's been presented here? Again, we didn't pay for a report to just sit on the shelf. And to do that, we then have, so if we say the money has to either come from somewhere, so there has to be cuts, or we have to increase something. And one of the things that we've struggled with is the cutting things. And I'm sure when we have the agency's work session, that we are going to even making this commitment we just made to them, it's going to be a challenge for some. Okay, so we're going to.
Well, and I. I know we want to get to public comment very soon, but I just want to, just sort of briefly, like, overall thoughts I had from this presentation. I mean, I find, I find it hard to comment with much specificity because obviously, at this point, you know, I followed the budget process for a number of years. I know typically there's a gap and you have to make some very difficult decisions and that's going to happen this year as well. But that has to happen holistically and obviously, at this point, we have not gotten an overall budget. I find it very hard to comment without seeing the state of the overall budget and what the specific priorities are. You know, I do have some concerns that, again, it's hard to comment on with specificity, not seeing an entire budget and this being our first opportunity to provide feedback. But in conversations I've had with a number of people, I do have concerns about looking at, you know, for example, departmental new requests. We don't have any idea of how those line items have shifted around, what department requests were approved, what weren't approved. And I do share significant concerns that when we talk about right sizing departments and what departmental requests get approved or not approved, that we want to make sure that those impacts do not disproportionately fall on employees, whether they're teachers, firefighters, city staff. And thinking about the impact of what is approved and not approved in the budget, that we're making it a priority to make sure that our employees, their salaries, their staff time is being a top priority. In addition to that, you know, I know when we got the school presentation, they had a number for a number of expenditures that were not discretionary, that that number was above 2.1. I'm sure during the budget process, we'll figure that out as well. But I think if what they presented us is accurate, and we have no reason to think it's not, they have non-discretionary expenditures above 2.1. And separate from that as well, you know, it may not be something that happens as budget cycle, which I understand, but I think it's very important that we think about staff capacity related to long-range planning and NDS when we're thinking about affordable housing. housing. We have our climate emissions reduction target goal of carbon neutrality by 2050. What's the level of staff positions in place to accomplish that goal? I don't see any discussion of that yet. And likewise, as Mayor Walker mentioned, thinking about staff positions in order to try to incorporate an analysis of equity across departments into decision-making, and I think that will require additional staff positions in a similar way that I think incorporating climate change across departments into decisions the city makes will also require additional staff positions, which again, I understand may not happen this budget cycle, but sort of a big-picture reactions at this point.
So, public comment?
If you're speaking, sign please come all the way up to the mic for your question.
I just want to say hello and thank you for taking a moment to hear my concerns. My name is Jay Dorsey. I'm a proud father and husband, and I'm a graduate of UVA, a Charlottesville firefighter, and a member of the local 2363. I come to you today as a concerned citizen and employee of Charlottesville. Most people, including myself, have always assumed that when you call 911 and request an ambulance, one will quickly arrive with several professional attendants. I have learned in my time with CFD that this is not always the case. All too frequently, the city of Charlottesville is left with only one and sometimes no ambulances to transport our sick and injured citizens. Worsening this issue is the lack of medic-level ambulances available that are dedicated to our citizens. This is an immediate concern for myself, my family, and my fellow firefighters. I respectfully ask that the members of city, of the city council stop any further cuts to CFD budgets and allocate funds for additional positions we desperately need. Thank you.
And I would like to comment that we haven't cut anything, so we're, we haven't cut any budgets, yeah.
But again, we don't know how those line items have shifted within the overall.
No, I understand that, but I just wanted to point out you saying that, so if something has been cut, we are hearing it now. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Greg Wright. I'm a firefighter medic for the city of Charlottesville and the president of the Charlottesville Professional Firefighters Association. I know that many of you have previously heard my concerns about staffing levels and specifically our emergency medical transport capabilities. This is an issue our city has studied since 2007, and each study or evaluation has returned the same findings. Charlottesville needs three ambulances dedicated to Charlottesville proper at all times. This does not mean we can move people around from one place to another, as earlier suggested. At the current time, Charlottesville is frequently left with one or no medic-level transport units. I understand the need for each of you to have data and figures to support your decisions, but the math is simple. A population of 50,000 people, 22,000 students, and a daytime commuter population, and one medic unit is dangerous for our citizens and our responders alike. For multiple budget cycles, including this one, we have been told that no new requests will be considered. We have been told public safety is a top priority. We've been told that we should come to the table with other options and that we don't understand. Across several city managers, city councilors, we have been patient and we have tried the other options. And each time, the end result is an increase in overtime and a decrease in the level of service. We can no longer wait for more studies or another major incident to decide to fund the fire department adequately. The time is now. I respectfully ask that council considers nine new fully funded employee positions to ensure that we have adequate medic-level transport capabilities around the clock. Thank you for your consideration.
I just have a question about those positions. So it's two medics, and then what are the other positions?
So currently, the Charlottesville Fire Department only has capabilities to staff Fire Medic 10 out of the Fontaine Firehouse 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We received three full-time employees when that went into service. The request and the reality at that time was we needed nine employees. The balance of those employees has never materialized, and now during the daytime hours, we're staffing Fire Medic 1 out of the Ridge Street Station, and that's solely done with overtime positions. And increasingly, we have the need to make that a 24-hour overtime unit to ensure that the ALS transport capabilities are what they should be for the community.
And there's been, as a result of that?
I believe last year was allocated over 300,000, and I'm certain we, if we haven't exhausted that midway through the fiscal year, we're close to it.
You had mentioned nine new employees, and two of whom, I gather, would be medics, and what would the other seven be?
So all of our staff is at least EMT basics, so they're able to ride on the ambulance or the fire trucks. We have, we're real narrow on the amount of medics that we have in the fire department, but we generally need, if we can move a medic to a transport unit, then we need another firefighter to fill that seat. So right now, what's happening is during our 24-hour shift, either a medic or BLS firefighter is being forced to work mandatory overtime to ensure there's enough bodies in all the seats that we're being staffed every day. So the, the opportunity exists to hire all medics, hire all BLS people, just generally the complement needs to increase.
To, by nine?
Yeah, at a minimum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Gaines. I live at 214 Ninth Street Northwest. I think all Charlottesvilleans would support the first two gentlemen that came up here making requests that are die-needed for their department. I had some personal concerns, but I'm going to call the city manager on my personal concerns. But I have some tax-saving measures. Is it necessary to use taxpayer funds to support unit-to-day activities every year? Now, my intention is not to downplay the effects of 2017. Secondly, discontinue funding the Human Rights Program. Now, funding for the above programs could be used to support the following needs. During the extremely hot season, additional funds could be used to keep the cooling shelters open 24 hours. Secondly, the city could use some of these funds to reach out more to the elderly population. Have someone to monitor our nursing homes. And I think many of you would be surprised on what goes on in the nursing homes, in some of them anyway. Provide more assistance to disabled and elderly residents, especially during snowstorms. City council should be thanked and maybe questioned for making funds available for affordable housing. Who are the recipients of affordable housing? What percent of these recipients are African-Americans? Number four, totally fund the request that is being made by the Charlottesville School Board. However, hold the body accountable. Fifth, reopen public discussion of Venniker Hill. I'm not so sure the total picture is being told as it relates to Venniker Hill. And the last two or three, I would take back maybe, because I would increase the level of home assistance to 75,000. Provide more affordable housing funds to Habitat for Humanity. And lastly, increase public use of the bus system, and this is one that has been done in some localities, by providing free transportation. Thank you.
My name is Sheila Hurley. I'm a city resident, 247 Shamrock Road, and I'm also a part of the Affordable Housing Committee with IMPACT, the Interfaith Movement Promoting Action by Congregations Together. I'm here tonight to support funding allocations for the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, the CAF. As you know, this, in this year's proposed CIP budget from last year, the CAF was suggested to receive only 800,000 in the upcoming fiscal year and nothing in following years, and we have not seen an updated CIP since that proposed budget, although I am grateful that the Planning Commission encouraged that to be rethought. The Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund is an instrument of hope in our city. It allows for support all along the housing spectrum for people of all income levels. As was mentioned, it allows support for Habitat for Humanity, Piedmont Housing Alliance, Friendship Court, and so many other, and in addition to public-private partnerships. With the CAF, the city has the funding flexibility to support projects like affordable homeownership or low-income, non-public housing. When we have local public money for affordable housing projects, it allows developers to leverage state and national funds. A local nonprofit partner says that locally, this money can be more than doubled in value, and nationally, it leverages up to eight times the funding invested. We are leaving money on the table if we do not invest in the CAF. The $3 million that we are pushing for on an annual basis, we would like to see 3 million this year and every upcoming year for the CAF, is not just a number. Estimates are that it takes about $30,000 of local public money to create one new unit of affordable housing. The $3 million translates to 100 units a year, which is a significant and visible step to take locally. Additionally, in order to address the housing shortage in our community, estimates are that we need 10 million dollars annually. In addition to the funding that's being provided, that is already committed in other projects, this 3 million makes a significant dent. My day job is working at a Catholic church. I oversee requests for emergency financial assistance from parishioners in need, and over and over again, I hear stories of people who have seasonal work and right now are struggling because it's winter and they don't have their regular income. I hear stories of families who can't afford to live in the city of Charlottesville and wish that they could. And I hear stories of people who are paying 80% of their income for housing. I want to stand up for people like this, and I call on you to do that in this year's budget. I'd invite those who support funding for the CAF to stand. Even if you didn't originally come here tonight to support the CAF, I invite you to stand if you or someone you know struggles to afford housing in the city of Charlottesville. And I would invite you to stand if you want to see the city of Charlottesville as a more diverse and inclusive community for people who make less money. Thank you.
I think a quick comment before the next comment, this goes back to the solutions and measurements, because we often, again, the CAF funding and funding related to the affordable, to affordable housing overall, is definitely necessary, but what I think groups like IMPACT don't take into consideration is the study on whether that money has been spent effectively and not just based on the nonprofit's version of what effective is. And that is another, you know, another idea around this measurement and solution is to make sure that we are not just giving people money because it sounds good, because we've given tens of millions of dollars away already to the very, some of the very nonprofits that you mentioned, and we are still in a crisis. So just take that into consideration.
I definitely acknowledge that that's true, and I think that revamping the process is something that could absolutely be worthwhile, but to stand and not give the important money, as you recognize, while waiting to revamp that process, that is, that has been so intransigent, is painful to the community members I know who are struggling right now, and that's why I want to see the changes happen.
But you need to ensure that the money that's being allocated and spent, just as you heard employees come up before and talk about their needs. I mean, everyone has needs, and the bottom line with this is to make sure that the money is being spent well. And that is one thing that a group like IMPACT, who does major advocacy, and the nonprofit themselves can help ensure, that it's not only, oh, we get 3 million dollars, and that we leverage these state and national dollars too, but how is the money being spent? And there have been some question marks there, and that is just something that outside groups should also look at when they advocate. Thank you.
I'm Peter Krebs from the Piedmont Environmental Council. PC hired me back in 2017 as part of an effort to connect communities and residents of Albemarle, Charlottesville, and the university with a comprehensive network of safe and useful bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure that ties our community together. I learned very quickly that connectivity actually begins at the front door. We're talking about people who need to get down to the end of the block, people who need to cross the street, kids need to ride their bike to their friend's house or to school, and we need to be able to move about freely and live active lives. We heard on Monday night from Jackie Martin and several others about the map to health community, health plan, which focuses on connectivity. There was also some good conversation about the decisive, really, impact that stress has on chronic disease, and conversely, managing stress is the first step to managing chronic disease. The problem and solution are really two sides of the same coin. We cannot be a healthy, prosperous community, and certainly not a joyful one, if people are afraid to cross the street, if kids can't get to school or to the park, or if families can't get an occasional breather when they need one. This requires basic infrastructure that only the city can provide, usually through the CIP. And I would be also very interested to see a revised version of the CIP, which I wasn't able to find. We're bringing a host of partners and matching funds from the private sector, Commonwealth, National, and a variety of sources, but the city definitely has to do its part through the CIP. Therefore, in the next draft of the budget, or in the CIP, I'd like to see the following CIP accounts funded at or above normal levels. So that's new sidewalks at or above 400K, bicycle infrastructure at or above 200K, trails development at or above 250. And you notice, those are not actually large amounts, but they're very important, and only the city can do them. I have to emphasize that. And in fact, the Planning Commission said you should go higher, and I agree. In any case, we can't go backward as a community, so I look forward to working with you all, finding ways to move forward. Thank you.
I want to just move to your question, which date is that?
I believe it's the second work session, which is March 12, March 12, I believe.
And you haven't done any adjustments from when it was last published, correct?
No.
Okay.
And I think, you know, this is another area where if we're talking about, you know, compensation for staff or salary positions, then we have to have realistic conversation about whether, if we can't do new sidewalk and compensation, then we have to make a decision about what is the value there.
Yeah, I only want to compare this stuff to other capital things.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand.
This is a different bucket in my brain, but.
But I'm just saying, just in general, like the, whether you can continue to do everything. Did you get one?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm in 1410 Grady Avenue. I would like to second Peter Krebs' well-articulated comments on sidewalk, bicycle, and trail infrastructure. Just ask you to please maintain those funding levels or increase them. It is very important for all of our citizens to be able to get around with alternative means besides just the motor vehicle, so do whatever. So do whatever you can. Court Hammond. Thank you.
I have a question. The fire department staff that's here, so were the overtime cuts, were they part of that too?
Yeah, we did.
It was an overtime one and a 21.
Okay. So what they're saying is that they... What am I asking? So the response is just being ready to respond, or that you all haven't been able to respond?
Frequently with our... Sorry, sir. With our current staffing levels, we're seeing an increase in what we call empty building calls. And that means that cars, daylight BLS ambulance is committed to a call, and then our ambulance is committed to a call. That leaves us in a situation where you'll still get a first response from a fire engine, but you'll be waiting for a transport unit, so...
I think we can have a conversation about that and looking at also how you're structured. And that may be something we can look at to try to help out in terms of being able to respond appropriately. And we can have those conversations because we can look at it from different angles in terms of how we staff and then be able to look at the future in terms of getting more staffing. And what I'm saying is that nine firemen is a lot of money all at once. But if you do it progressively over time, as I keep telling folks, we can be able to get to certain places. But doing it all at once, that's, I mean, I mean, you know and I know that's unrealistic. But we can, we can look at a way to plan for us to move forward. And I think that's something that we can do.
Well, my question is, so just to make sure that if they're saying that, again, back to the question of whether it's being ready to respond or not, which you just answered. And then if the overtime has been cut to where, if they already couldn't respond, they won't be able to nail, right? Because they're, who would be working?
And I wouldn't just say it's for that. But I'm also saying there's other things within the department that need to be adjusted to, to be able to accommodate that.
Oh, no, I'm just asking a question based on, it's just a thought that I had based on the comments that we had.
I just want to highlight, reducing, removing, or restructuring our four engines and two aerials will put our ISO-1 and our accreditation at risk. That will evaporate. I know our businesses in the area depend on ISO-1. That's an insurance rating. That's the highest rating. We're one of fewer than 90 departments in the entire nation that has ISO-1 and an international accreditation. So moving people around in an effort to prolong what we've known since 2007, it is a big ask. It is a big lift, but it's time.
Yeah, and I understand that. And, you know, this is my first city to be a city manager, so I understand ISO rating. I came from ISO rating of a city. So, you know, there's things that we can do, and we can make those, we can have those discussions. And I'm looking forward to that. And I saw you in the building today, but I couldn't reach you because I was too busy.
No, bro. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Andy Orban.
Go ahead.
I'm a city resident, a father of three city schools, children at city schools. So my first request is that you fully fund the city schools' budget request. It's important that the teachers get their cost of living increases and that we have the adequate, you know, staff and the support that the schools need to educate our children. There's also, I think, Michael, you mentioned looking at the overall budget picture. You know, this is, I guess, discussing the general fund, but we do need to look at how this relates to the capital fund as well. You know, we have some big asks on that end with the new parking garage proposed, for example, which I really think should be looked at again. Because I think there's some, you know, we talk about, you know, dealing with climate change and everything, and having a new 300-space garage is sort of going the opposite direction. Another thing I want to raise is the Office of Human Rights. It's been reported, Charlene Green is no longer the director. The Human Rights Office is a really important office in the city. It's a place where citizens can come to, to address discrimination needs that can function as an agency that can, that can address and intake those needs. So I feel that's a really important service that the city provides. And I want to make sure that that office is fully staffed and able to handle the needs of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walt Heinecke, a city resident, Amherst Street. First of all, I'm, by profession, I'm an evaluator. And I teach evaluation, and I practice evaluation, and I completely support the mayor's idea of having somebody in city, in city hall, looking at efficiency and how we're spending our money. I think it's long overdue. We need to have some accountability on that. I also completely agree with her comments about making sure that when we talk about affordable housing, that we're getting the best bang for our buck. And I think we are, but I think we need to, you know, we need to hold ourselves accountable for that. So on behalf of the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition, I want to, I just want to remind us that we're in the middle of a significant crisis. Your own hack has told you that we have a 4,000 interventionary unit crisis in this, in this town in terms of affordable housing. They've estimated that that's going to take about 10 to 15 years to solve, and that it's going to require a commitment of at least $10 million a year from the city to solve that particular problem. So I want to make sure that we're thinking long-range and long-term and making a commitment to having $10 million in the affordable housing, in, for affordable housing this year, in the CIP and in the Affordable Housing Fund. Thank you very much for moving $700,000 from fiscal year 19 to the current year's Affordable Housing Fund. I thought that was a good move. Thank you very much. Just to reiterate what's been said, there is only $800,000 from the CIP allocated to the Affordable Housing Fund for fiscal year '21. We need to have at least $3 million in that fund to leverage state and federal funds to make improvements. That kind of a commitment would probably lead to probably, at least maybe 100 units of affordable housing being constructed. And to Mayor Walker's point, I think we in the affordable housing community are in the process of looking at how much money from, how the funds from last year, which were about $10 million for affordable housing, what kind of yield they had in terms of units against that 4,000 crisis. So we're in the process of taking that, taking a look and producing numbers to convince you all that that money is being well-spent, and it is going to lowering the, to mitigating the affordable housing crisis. So we need that, we need that money in the, in the CAF for funding anti-displacement measures like rent and tax relief, as you've already heard today. One thing that you haven't heard that I think we need to really consider is we need to have a strike fund. We need to start thinking long-term and start buying up properties in this community so that we can build affordable housing units going forward, like a land bank. So we need to get started now because the property, the properties in this city are disappearing daily. And pretty soon, there aren't going to be properties to buy. So we need to get on that at this point and start thinking about that for our budget. On the PCRB, just have a couple of things to say. The People's Coalition has asked for 1% of the Charlottesville Police Department's budget to be allocated to the PCRB. That's about, we estimate it's somewhere around $180,000 to $200,000. So I'd encourage you to rethink what's been allocated so far and what's being proposed for the '21 budget. We also would like you to think about funding the two positions now, in this budget now, so that we can anticipate both of those positions being hired in that, in that funding cycle. So lastly, on the Human Rights Commission, I agreed with everything that Mr. Gaines said, except for one thing. I think we actually, actually ought to try the Human Rights Commission for once. We've been at this for many, many years, and we haven't really, we haven't really tried the Human Rights Commission with the basic model. So I'm asking you to think about putting $200,000 into this budget to put, for hiring a civil rights attorney or director of compliance for the Office of Civil Rights, and using some of those funds to be made available to the Human Rights Commission to do a major study on employment discrimination and housing discrimination in this city. Because really, think about this. We're, a lot of you, most all of you are concerned about homeownership in this, in this city. How do we expect people to buy houses in this city when they're discriminated against in their employment? Really? How do, how do we, how do we get there if they're going to be discriminated against in employment? And then we're also worried about renters being displaced from the, from high rents, being displaced from this community. How are we going to stop that if we don't have a solid way of fighting discrimination in housing and renting? So I'm asking you to think seriously about actually making the Human Rights Commission work for once, rather than, you know, undermining it by not giving it full enforcement capability and compliance capability. So I'm asking you to rethink that. And let's give that a chance for at least two years to see how that works. Thank you.
Idea of a land-strike fund, I think something for the community to be aware of, certainly council as well, is there are a number of low-income housing tax credit properties that have a set period of affordability. And there's a number of those over really just a few years, which will become market rate. I think the first of those is Midway Manor. So that's something to be aware of long-term, thinking about. If we don't want those to all just become market rate, how do we address that issue? So, thank you.
I'm Tom Eckman. I'm from IMPACT. And I just want to concur with getting more money in the CAF. I know I've talked to a few of the city councilors. The idea of land being important for creating low-income housing is really important. Some of the research we've done with other counties, other cities, is that these trust funds can leverage up to about eight, eight times what's in the fund. The fund can be used to buy, buy property. And property is like money. Like if you talk to a contractor, 25% of the investment is the land that is, the thing is built on. And if we had land, and if it could be donated, that land could be, 25% of the cost could be invested in creating the apartments that are in that housing as being dedicated to low-income housing. I made a study in an Excel spreadsheet, and I said, if I bought, if I made 200 units, and I spent $400,000 on each of them, and I charged like $200, or $2,500 a month rent for the majority of them, how many of them, if the land was donated, could I, could I rent out at $600 a month, which would be affordable for a lot of low-income people? And turned out, 30% of the units. So this idea of a strike fund and having land available, if the land was donated, you could build apartments and have a certain percentage. And if that land was leased over a 100-year period, you could keep that affordable for 100 years. So it's something to think about. But if you don't have the money available in a trust fund, when land becomes available, it's going to get bought by somebody else. And the city ought to be thinking about where there's land and opportunities. There's shopping centers that are, that are in trouble now. Parking lots in, in shopping centers that could be bought, and they could be valuable property to build apartments for low-income housing. So thank you. And I think we need to have plenty of money in that Affordable Housing Fund. Thanks.
Hello. I'm Shamora, and I reside at 200 Burnett Street. I'm here tonight to talk about allocating and investing money into the Charlottesville Area Housing Fund. I'm a mother, and I'm a homeowner, thanks to Habitat for Humanity. I'm asking that you take a look into investing a great amount of funding into the Charlottesville Housing Fund to help with homelessness while providing affordable housing and homeownership for low-income residents in Charlottesville. We must significantly expand our investments into the Housing Affordable Fund to make homes affordable for people with low and lower incomes in Charlottesville. Investing into the Charlottesville Housing Affordable Fund is important to me when I see many of families and friends struggling every day to be able to afford to live in Charlottesville. Rents are extremely high. Homeowner options is not realistic without programs like PHA and Habitat for Humanity for single-family households living in Charlottesville without government assistance. So please look into investing more money into the Housing Fund. And that's to make sure that the money is allocated and spent properly and that our residents are benefiting. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Closing public comment. I guess my final comment in terms of, maybe final, but the schools. You know, when we had our joint-budget work session with them, they gave us a list, and we had this discussion last year or two. I think the amount was the $500,000, right? Was that the, or less? That we did meet. But without knowing what our departments have requested, it's challenging for me to commit. Because I feel like if we at least need to have that information to know what those cuts look like, what areas they were in, what the amounts were, to even be able to have a community discussion and a discussion with the schools about what our departments are doing, if they're just main, because it seems like they're staying at levels that they were previously at, minus the few, I, few programs. So that would be helpful for me to make a decision about what the advocacy that the schools are putting in for that extra $2.5 million, you know, looks like, and help to have that discussion about, these are some things that internally have been cut by staff.
Or new requests not honored.
Or, yes.
Yeah, typically, as part of the supplemental information we provide with the proposed budget, we have the list of new requests. In years where we've made substantial reductions to departmentals, requests and submissions, we've provided a list of those as well. So that, our plan was to, when we provide those supplemental materials with the proposed budget, to actually, to provide that as well.
Because there is 8 million that we really haven't talked about because you all had already made the decision that we really just can't consider an additional 8 million of our own department's requests. So that's not even in anything, you've just, you've shown that it was there, but it was considered, but we haven't even, you know, that was just, wasn't even considered to put in front of us. And so I'm agreeing with, it's important that we're kind of looking at all of these big buckets similarly, and that a lot of decisions are already made that we can't do a lot of things that we really want to do.
Agreed.
And then in terms of the conversation around the COLA with the school employees versus our employees, just whatever, that discussion needs to happen so that they are in alignment. And what those numbers look like on our end too, that if it's...
We added another percent. That's roughly another half a million dollars.
For city employees.
Teacher salaries as well? Or I guess that's a separate...
That's on their side.
Right. So then if we are, you know, then it would be $500,000?
Give or take. That was quick on the fly, but roughly, yeah.
And although I hear that point, but I also see teachers not necessarily equivalent to city staff. I mean, it's a different world, but... I mean, just thinking about the state of teacher pay within Virginia. But that's a whole nother conversation.
I mean, I think if we need some information from the schools on that. But I, I think that in terms of if we're asking employees to come to work and do work, and they're doing that well, then that's important. And I wouldn't want to, for them to feel like, based on what position that they're in, that they're not valued in the same way. So I would be hesitant... were at, I think, one of the top rates in the state, if I remember correctly, and I think there are some members from the, yeah. Do you want to speak on that, Dr. Atkins?
Good afternoon to the city manager and city council. I did bring with me to this evening a budget book, and if we take a look at our starting teacher salary, that is at, and that's for a bachelor's degree, is 48,143. If we move teachers up one step on the scale, from the starting to one step, an increase of 1.75, there's a difference of about $450 to move up one step. So they would go from 48,143 to 48,626. So with the 3% salary increase, that's going to be somewhere around 500, 600 in additional pay. Now, as the teachers get higher on the scale and closer to the top, the step, the gap is a little wider, and you get into the 7, 800, 900. Sometimes it's a $1,000 difference in a step. And as we started to consider 2% versus 3%, a lot of times we talk about whether Northern Virginia is our competition for attracting new teachers into our school system. The reality is our neighboring school division, Albemarle County, that's our competition. And when we know that the competition is going to give a 3% salary increase, it behooves us to maintain our position and be in sync. I do agree that a 2%, whether it be on the school side or the city side, at 3%, one more percentage makes a big difference in the lives of our employees on both the city and the school side.
I certainly agree with your point, Mayor Walker. I would, again, just for us to be aware of the context of Virginia, I think being 35th out of 50 states in terms of teacher salaries, as well as, I know, bus drivers in Charlottesville, school bus drivers also deal with not having access to full-time benefits, as well as some issues with pay, especially compared to the Albemarle County as a competing locality. But that's a whole nother conversation.
And I'm interested in us figuring out pay across the board for all city employees, including schools, in an equitable way. So I hope everyone knows that. And I just think that we need to be consistent with this increase, and of course, based on what I've said before, I would, of course, go with the higher COLA increase, but I do want that information so we can make that, you know, have that discussion.
This is one of the reasons why I always say 2, you know, and I know we talk about it during the budget season, but this is stuff we need to talk about year-round and start having more meetings between, you know, myself, my budget team, as well as with the city council, talk about these priorities, talk about what, you know, our proposed projections are for the forthcoming fiscal year, so we can talk about these things, what truly are, you know, of paramount importance to each of you, and then have those decisions already, you know, basically in the pipeline for the, for the next fiscal year.
We agree.
But I just think, you know, with the new council members coming on, you know, and then, you know, trying to fit in a time with everyone, we just had to do, I think, a better job in terms of meeting and having these conversations.
And I think our strategic plan, that work session, will also help guide us in terms of overall, like, just as blindly as we are trying to commit to this vibrant community process, like, once we make a decision about what priorities are, then we need to commit to those. And right now, I understand we're all over the place, and you get maybe different messages from different councilors about what's the priority, and it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of push and pull. So I get that.
We'll get there.
All right.
For the public's benefit, the information you have about the budget so far is the information we have as council. So far in the budget process, we do not have a full budget document. We don't know how line items within budgets have moved around. This is the information we have. We haven't received a revised CIP after the planning commission's recommendations either. So we're sort of all on a similar page. I know, you know, again, you know, as I said earlier, I don't have any information, so it's hard to say with specificity, but a concern, you know, I do have is thinking about how line items have shifted around within departments, even if the total dollar amount is the same. It's just making sure that we're prioritizing employees and their salaries, as well as the amount of hours they're working and their working conditions. But, you know, the process is just beginning, so that is what it is.
It's going to be fun. It is not. But we'll get through it. Get through it.
It's a tug.
All right, so do you all need anything else from us tonight?
No, we got it. And the two sent, looking at that and putting that in as far as our advertisement.
Advertising, but we're hoping to figure the world out without increasing the real estate tax.
That's right.
Charlottesville city's citizens who own real estate.
Final comment from myself. Again, something for, I think, all of us, that's a frustration, is just the fact that we're so limited by the General Assembly. We can't do progressive taxation based on the value of a household or income. The General Assembly prohibits us from doing that, which really makes it really hard for us, and I think a lot of this as well is feeling the austerity coming from the federal government, thinking about the tax bill and other changes that have been made, as well as a lack of investment from the state government. And part of this is advocacy at the state level as well, in order to try and give us more tools and more funding. For example, it's going to change this General Assembly session, but our local affordable housing trust fund has more money than the entire statewide affordable housing trust fund. That will change, but that's the level of lack of investment there is at that level. But that's, that's always a frustration for myself.
Thanks for that reality check.
All right. So, no further comments? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.